She said something about alternative schools.
Yep, it's time.
Wouldn't be that, because that's at your campus, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pousa.
Here.
Alderman Bittner. Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian. Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Diddleman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Weigand.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Aye.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
Alderman Ovian is excused. He, unfortunately, if you hadn't heard, his sister had passed away. So he's at the wake this evening. Roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Phil Clay. Fire Chief Tom Ward. Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn. Human Resource Director Sherry Feder Salvatore.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Bellbo. Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Interim Director of Residential and Commercial Development Services Anissa McCaskill. Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here. Okay, let me go through this. There's a lot of vacations towards the end of this fiscal year. Anissa's excused, Chief Clay's excused, Assistant Chief Ice Can's here for his behalf. Eric's here on behalf of Anissa. And Kenny's excused.
He's here for Tom Ward.
Bud's here. I was looking for Bud, I couldn't see him, because he told me you were gonna be here. And the Deputy Chief is here for the Fire Chief. Is that it?
That is it.
Okay.
Or Debbie Bellbo.
Debbie Bellbo's excused. She's probably at spring training.
Yeah.
And about to retire. Okay, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, all those who are able, if you'd stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have several people here that maybe have never been to a meeting before. If we ever had to leave the building due to smoke or fire, heaven forbid, the Police Department would kind of carefully guide you to one of the two doors in the lobby. We would ask that you exit quickly and rapidly, but safely. But then we would hope that possibly you could go over in front of the county sign so that we could regroup and check with you if all the people from your party that you came with are all accounted for. If we had a storm, the police officers or city staff would advise how you go across the lobby to the stairway that goes right across McClurk's office to downstairs. When speaking this evening, Aldermen, please use the microphones. And to anybody who does come up to be asked any questions, if you're on the agenda or if someone would like to speak in just a moment when I recognize you for public participation, please step up to the mic right here and give your name. And try to keep your comments for public participation to two to three minutes. And preferably on an agenda topic, or at least a city topic. Okay, at this time, I will open public participation. Anyone? I didn't say it, but I'm gonna go ahead and say it now back up. We do not have a public hearing scheduled this evening, so that was, I was supposed to say that first. Okay, at this time, since no one's raising their hand for public participation, I'm gonna close public participation. And we're gonna move on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments, and we have none. We're moving right along here. We move now to the approval of the minutes. I'd ask for a motion to approve the City Council in executive session minutes from March 4th, 2019. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Diddleman, second by Wiggington. Any additions or corrections? All in favor of receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Claims payroll and dispersments. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of $1,149,663.46 and the payroll in the amount of $852,242.42. Alderman Consilla made the motion. Alderman Anthony made the second. Any discussion on the claims or payroll dispersments? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
It's sloped. Motion carried. Reports, we go to Traffic Committee. Alderman Ovian's not here. Who's gonna take it? Were you there, Jane?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Do you want me to read them as a group, or should I read them?
What's your pleasure, folks? Can we read them as a group? Is there any controversy on that? What? Group, okay.
Okay.
Proceed, Alderman Pousa.
Okay. 11A, motion to approve no parking January through June on the South 22nd Street from South Belt West to Dead End. And no parking from July to December on the South 22nd Street, West End, Dead End, West Side. 11A2, motion to amend Chapter 76 parking schedule. Schedule X5, no parking loading zone starting at 100 feet from northwest corner of North Church Street to East B Street and extending 40 foot. 11A3, motion to amend Chapter 76 parking schedule IV by depleting persons with disability parking at 201 North Church Street, three places in front of the building at SWIC PSOP.
So we have a motion from Alderman Pousa. This is coming from Traffic Committee. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Elmore. Do I hear discussion on these three motions? All in favor of approving these motions and having the proper ardnances drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance, Alderman Consilla.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve financing with Bank of Belleville at 2.63 percent for the purchase of one new automated sanitation truck and one new rear loader sanitation truck.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Pousa. Do I hear discussions about the Finance Committee on this item? Roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Poole, did we get that truck yet?
Yeah.
Okay. We got one from last year. We're still waiting on for almost a whole.
Ordered in May.
Huh? Ordered in May. Alrighty. It's a slow process. Especially for the one-man trucks. Okay, Zoning Board of Appeals. We got a bunch of them. Any of them you want to separate out? Or would you like to? What's your preference? Huh?
Read them as a group.
Yeah.
Read them as a group?
Yeah, read them as a group.
One of them is different, Your Honor.
Tell me what you're.
One of them is applicant only. But they'll make a difference or not.
Well, but we're gonna talk, she's going to, we're gonna get through that.
Yeah, it'll say that.
It'll say that, it'll say that, okay? Okay, proceed.
Okay. 11C1, 1 January 19, Leroy Endors Isbell, a request for a special use permit to operate a Ben &amp; Breakfast Airbnb at 911 East C Street, Rear, parcel number 08220401034, located in an A1 Single Family Residence District. Applicable section of the zoning code 162.570, Ward 1. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval. 11C2, 02 February 19, St. Clair County Event Center, DBA Country Cafe, request for a special use permit for a liquor license at 1550 East State Route 15, parcel number 13010400030, located in a C4 Commercial District. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.278 and 162.515, Ward 6. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only. 11C3, 05 February 19, Lark Spur 120 Carlyle LLC, David Bernstein, request for a special use permit to operate a storage facility at 120 Carlyle Plaza Drive, parcel number 08230401101, located in a C2 Heavy Commercial District. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248 and 162.515, Ward 7. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval. 11C4, 06 February 19, Empire Comfort Systems, Ken Building, request to rezone 912 South Charles Street, 933 Freeburg Avenue, and 939 Freeburg Avenue from A1 Single Family Residence District to D1 Light Industry District, parcel numbers 08270305013, and 08270305023. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.090 through 094, 162.305 through 308, and 162.590, Ward 6. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval. 11C5, 07 February 19, City of Belleville, request to rezone 943 Freeburg Avenue from A1 Single Family Residence District to D1 Light Industry District, parcel number 08270305024. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.090 through 094, 162.305 through 308, and 162.590, Ward 6. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna ask if someone's willing to make a motion then to approve 11C1, 11C2, 11C3, 11C4, 11C5, and have the proper ardnances drawn. Motion by Alderman Gah, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion on these that you just heard read?
I'd like to point out, Mayor, that the 11C3, there are artist renderings up here to the left of the front desk of the, what was formerly known as the Walmart Building. Mr. Bernstein is here, he flew in to be at this meeting. And he's met with you, he's met with Anissa several times. Anissa's taken us through the building and his.
He was at Economic Development, I think.
Economic Development, zoning.
A lot of zoning, yeah.
The whole process has been impeccable and very happy to see his plans.
I think everybody is, sounds pretty concerned, pretty interested, so. At this time, we have a motion to approve all these recommendations coming from zoning. They will be voted on later in the meeting for the ardnance. But at this time, if there's no objections, and this is also to have the proper ardnances drawn, all in favor of approving these zoning recommendations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to number E, let's see here, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We move on to Economic Development Annexation Committee, Mr. Consilla.
On behalf of the Economic Development Annexation Committee, I'd like to make a motion that we annex 0.72 acre portion of 18 Cozidor Place, parcel number 0834.0300-006.
So we have a motion to annex 18 Cozidor Place. And do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Diddleman. Do I hear a discussion on this item here for this first motion? Roll call.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Consilla, you wanna go to the second one, 11D2.
I'd like to make a motion that we have to annex 0.72 acre portion of parcel 0834.0-300-008.
I have a motion from Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Randall. Do I hear discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Just for the audience's sake, I'd like to mention that this is family members that are swapping the same size piece of land so that one can have access to another piece of land.
Yeah. It was done very congenial. Okay, if there's no further questions, roll call.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Wiggington.
Okay, on behalf of Ardnance and Legal Committee, 11-E, I'd like to make a motion to amend Title III Administration, Chapter 33 Public Safety, Law Enforcement, Section 33.107, Health Insurance Benefits. So moved.
Okay. We have a motion by Wiggington, second by Randall. Any discussion on this first one, 11E1? Hearing none. Roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah.
If it's not a problem, if anybody said Alderman Wiggington, go ahead and read the rest.
Well, that's what I was just gonna ask, 'cause if there's anybody that needs to separate anything out.
No.
Well, then, if there's no objection to that, let's proceed and read 2, 3, and 4 as a group.
You got it. Thanks, Ken. Okay, on behalf of Ardnance and Legal Committee, I'd like to make a motion to amend Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 121 Alcoholic Beverages, Section 121.06 License Classification Fees Numbers. 11-E, motion to amend Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 110 General Licensing Provisions, Section 110.04 Farm. And 11-E, motion to amend Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 150 Building Code, Building Regulations, Section 150.37 Dumpster Permit, and Section 150.38 Permit Tables. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington to approve 11E2, 11E3, and 11E4. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer. Do I hear discussion on these items coming out of the Ardnance and Legal Committee? Roll call.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Wiggington, we switch now to Streets and Grades, and how are these items? Were there some?
If it'd be your pleasure, I'd like to read them all together. These are all contracts that'll be coming up.
Streets and Grade members, etc., any of you have issues with these? Okay, I'll ask you to proceed.
And I just wanna say one thing, though. I wanna thank Jason Poole for a job really well done this year during the winter months. And I think our Street Department Director of Public Works did a great job. And I wanna thank Tim Gregowitz and Colette. You know, we're getting ready for all these contracts coming up for the first of the fiscal year, putting a lot of work into this with IDOT. And I wanna thank them for the work that they've been doing on this.
Point well taken, I think we all agree.
Okay, on motion, on behalf of Streets and Grades Committee, 11-F, motion to approve a three-year agreement for a Smith and Township Road District to operate and maintain specific portions of Schleter-Germain Road and Countryside Lane that are currently under the City of Belleville's jurisdiction. 11-F2, motion to approve 2019-2020 QBS Policy and Procedure Memorandum. 11-F3, motion to approve Bealman Logistics LLC in the amount of $38,606 for Group 1A and 1B for the 2020 General Maintenance Aggregates MFT Funds. 11-F4, motion to approve Chris Brothers Asphalt in the amount of $106,000 for Group 2A and $52,000 for Group 2B for the 2020 General Maintenance Asphalt MFT Funds. 11-F5, 11-F5, motion to approve Bealman Logistics LLC in the amount of $61,460 for Group 3A, $67,172 for Group 3B, Mike A. Mage Trucking in the amount of $194,953.50 for the Group 3C, DMS Contracting in the amount of $64,400 for the 2020 General Maintenance Oil and Ship Program MFT Funds. 11-F6, motion to approve Metal Culverts Incorporated in the amount of $19,548.75 for 2020 General Maintenance Culverts MFT Funds. 11-F7, motion to approve Concrete Supply of Illinois in the amount of $8,575 for 2020 General Maintenance Concrete MFT Funds. 11-F8, motion to approve Hank's Escavating and Landscaping Incorporated in the amount of $219,464 for the 2020 Infrastructure Program MFT TIF Funds. And 11-F9, motion to approve Electrico in the amount of $43,207.88 for the 2020 Traffic Signal Program MFT Funds. So moved.
Just to make an observation, we had our young boy scout I was talking to. MFT is the Motor Fuel Tax Funds. So I know he's back there taking notes for his merit badge, so. Okay, at this time, I'd like to see if someone's willing, or Mr. Wiggington, if you make a motion then for 11F1, 11F2, 11F3, 11F4, 11F5, 11F6, 11F7, 11F8, and 11F9. Do you make that motion, Mr. Wiggington?
I sure do. Motion.
And a second by Alderman Elmore. Do we have any discussion on these coming from Streets and Grades? Roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion's carry. Go to Communications. Not a real long list tonight. Are you ready for this?
Yeah. Can I read them together?
Yes.
Okay.
12A, Linnenwood University Belleville Commencement Ceremony, 5/11/2019. Request from Linnenwood University Belleville to hold their 2019 commencement ceremony Saturday, May 11, 2019, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Requesting assistance with traffic control, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. 12B, Pride Fest 6/8/2019. Request from Metro East Pride of Southwestern Illinois to hold Pride Fest Saturday, June 8, 2019. 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. street closure request. West Main Street from 159 to mid-block between Second and Third Street, one block on North First, South First, North Second, and South Second Street to parking on entrances and alleys as applicable. Additional services requested, barricades, no parking signs, trash toters, picnic tables, use of the Northwest Quadrant, electrical panels, police, and street department personnel.
Do I hear a motion to approve these communication requests? Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Gah. Any discussion on these two? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to petitions. We have none. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3355. Motion by Consilla, second by Wiggington. All in favor of reading Resolution 3355 by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
14A, Resolution 3355, a resolution authorizing bank loan for two sanitation vehicles.
Do I hear a motion to approve that resolution? Consilla and Steele. Any discussion on approving Resolution 3355? Roll call.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.